Let's call this meeting in order, please, for all rise. Say, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Father Paul, excuse me, Reverend Paul is not here today, so please be seated. You want to do then?
No.
I'll let you, I'll let you. Okay, first and foremost, let's do a, do a, do a roll call. Alderman Smith, absent, let us know that. Alderman Snyder?
Here.
Alderman Simpson?
Here.
Alderman Quinn?
Here.
Alderman Saunders?
Here.
Alderman Osborne?
Here.
Okay, we have a call. Okay, um, first thing, we want to review and approve, uh, the minutes of the May twenty-third. Meeting should be under tab four. I don't have it.
Your tab.
I found it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute that's prepared for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, we'll start out with the mayor's report. I wish I could say this would be quick, but it won't be. Uh, we contacted McLaurin Associates to have them restart, uh, the Mill Street project. Uh, on July twenty-third, meeting of the board of last year, twenty twenty-three. The board approved nine thousand five hundred dollars for them to begin getting a permit for reasons beyond my comprehension, and maybe some of you, uh, former, excuse me, uh, Alderman from the previous administration would know why, but they didn't move forward on it. So they're now going to contact, uh, the landowners that were owners of record when they went to get their easements, to find out if there are still the owners, and then start moving forward with the permitting process. Along with that, uh, we have, uh, refunds that are, uh, ARPA funds. This is, uh, connected to the, uh, COVID money that was made available through the state of Missouri to municipalities for, uh, projects that they had submitted requisitions for approval. Uh, we have those monies, uh, in a, in an account in the amount of four hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents. Because we cannot find all the appropriate, uh, documentation, we were required to contact, uh, the Missouri Department of Revenue, submit documentation and paperwork to allow us to have access to our account so we can, uh, view it. I said Missouri, it's actually the United States Treasury. And so that was, that was interesting. The Missouri Council, Regional Council of Governments helped us, uh, get the contact information.
Do they have a specified purpose?
We, we can find no record of a specified purpose. Uh, what, uh, Devon sent us from, uh, MCROG is that, uh, she thought, and I don't understand the relationship, that this, these funds may have been, uh, associated with the EDA grant that we recently canceled. However, uh, she thought that may be why that it had a notation on it as being restricted. However, the funds can be used for wastewater, uh, sewer, uh, electric, uh, general revenue fund replacement. And what we have to do is get access to the account, uh, and then, and basically then go from there on what we're planning on doing with it. Uh, when we first became aware of this, we were under the impression, right, wrong, or indifferent, that these funds had been intended to be used for the Mill Street project. Do you have any recollection of that?
Uh-uh.
Well, we'll get.
So these funds are not currently in our account?
They are currently in our account, they pay us.
So our current balance includes this money?
That, that, it's a restricted account, it has its own unique account number, is restricted, is four hundred ninety-six thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
So the balance, are you seeing if F and M includes this money?
So that's information, we will, uh, we will update the board as more information, uh, becomes available.
There's no timeline you have to use that money in?
Say again.
Is there a timeline?
Yes.
By the end of this year, you have, well, the mayor can probably inform you on that. Uh, by the end of this year, you have to have a project set in mind to use the funds. They don't have to be extended by the end of this year, I believe by the end of, uh, twenty twenty-six.
That's correct.
Is when they have to be used up or we give them back.
Any more questions about that? Real quickly, this is information only really unless, unless someone wants to comment on the board, wants to comment. Uh, we received a, um, letter from, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to cut some shade, just give me a second here. From, uh, Kieran O. Stewart Esquire, Associate General Counsel for Watchtower, which is, uh, Bible and Tract Society of New York, also known as Jehovah's Witnesses. Uh, they wanted to remind us that our ordinance, one sixty-five dash sixty-six, that that ordinance does not allow our police department to inform Jehovah's Witnesses that they have to notify the police department prior to engaging in their personal ministry.
And I, Jeanette sent me that, I've already talked to Zach about it. I think what the Jehovah's Witnesses told legal is different than what happened.
What actually happened?
Regardless, the last paragraph is like, no harm, no foul, just if we come back and knock on doors, leave us alone, so that.
Yes.
I think it's all been taken care of.
So no, no further interference with the ministry, so it's, I get it.
I had something to add to that.
Sure.
Unless they're asking for donations.
Right.
Correct, correct.
They were overheard asking for donations on some of them.
You know, you know, it gets, it, it can be, get sticky real quick, and I'm not sure it's worth the, worth the effort.
Right, I know.
First one, but. Anything else on that one? Okay, next, um, received, uh, some information from, uh, Phyllis Foster. She bought some photographs of damage to the, uh, to some stones, cemetery stones, uh, that belong to her family. I'm not exactly sure what remedy it, it is that she sought. One of the stones has, has been, uh, moved, uh, on its whole foundation or, or platform. She would like to have it squared back up. You can pass this around if you want to, real quickly, and this is damage she says occurs when they go to the end to make their turn back up to the next. There's no way to know if that's what occurred, but.
I think it's from mowing?
That's what, that's what she, that's what she alleges, yes.
You don't have any proof of no.
No, there's no proof, it's just.
It's just, I'm sure, my family, I'm a tree cemetery, so I just moved it back.
One of the things that we talked about, excuse me, one thing we talked about with, uh, with Mr. O'Brien was possibly, uh, seeing a buke would go ahead and, uh, straighten that up and, or give us a quote to add to his existing quote, uh, to straighten that up.
Does it just have to be taken and moved?
That's it.
With your hand? Because that's all I have.
I, I, I would prefer, I don't know.
Okay.
I would prefer to have a contractor do it, that way if there's any, uh, any issues where we can go back to the contractor and try to, try to get, uh, them to resolve it. If we do it, it's on us, automatically on us.
Sure.
It's just a thought, we'll do whatever you all would like to do.
I think that's fine, if we can look at it when he's already out there.
We received, um, a letter from, uh, Mr. Crager, I think his name is Joe Crager, requesting that we take a more aggressive approach to nuisances. Uh, provided this to, uh, Chief James, he prepared a very well-written, um, response back to Mr. Crager, so we mailed back to him. Um, I think, real quickly, I kind of gave you an idea of what's going on here. He said, in, in just the past month, we addressed twenty-six properties, issued twenty-two citations, uh, and some of the property owners have received multiple citations for one property. Of those properties addressed, all have been, of those properties addressed, all have been addressed and debated with exceptional three, and we will continue to enforce these violations throughout here. Well, and explain that, uh, when making a determination to, uh, establish that a nuisance doesn't in fact create a threat to the health and safety of the public near the property. Of course, there's other ordinance that are dealing specifically with, with abandoned automobiles. But I think he did a pretty, pretty good job of, of answering most of, uh, Mr. Crager's questions, but we did, I just wanted to make you aware of it, we posted and sent it out. We received a email bid on property that the city owns. And I think the purpose of the bid, because I talked to, to Monica Ludwig, uh, the purpose for a bid was a, a, attempt to get movement, uh, back in the direction of, uh, of leasing on that one particular property, Gordon Hill, to get it back up for, uh, potential sale if, if we, if we so choose, the board so chooses. They were the second bidder on the property, the first bidder backed out after determining the property was not of sufficient size, sufficient size for the intended purposes of the purchase. Not sure how that works. Do we not require earnest money on these types of transactions where there's a penalty if someone backs out?
That whole deal went in the direction that.
Okay, I think what you're saying is in the future, we'll follow your recommendation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But no, if we want to open that, I mean, I think it'd be great for the city, all those properties, if we want to try to get bids on them again and require earnest money was.
It's.
Because, uh, I mean, we're not getting any tax revenue on those, and they can be put to better use.
And we're having to maintain them correctly?
Right, we're mowing on them.
What, um, someone bought, I had this discussion with an individual, and they asked us simple questions. I don't know the answer to, and it may not, it may not be a question I should even ask, but they said, why don't you just have an auction, have a single auction, put them all out there? Whoever shows up and bids on them, the highest bidder takes it.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
I mean, I realize it could be a fire sale, we could practically give them away, but most, many of these properties, and can I use the word blighted area? Many of these properties in areas that, that reduce their value significantly.
I agree.
I say, if we could unload, 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 if we could sell these properties and get them off our books, it'd probably be in our best interest.
I think so too.
Do we have a list, like our current holdings or anything?
What would we, what would this board need, I apologize.
I just wondered what, I don't know, what properties we all.
I can get you the list, there's, there's multiples.
I mean, one idea I can have is you have, let the city marshal conduct the auction, just like the sheriff does at the courthouse. Advertise it, you win the bid, you put your money down, and then we get you a deed, a quick clean deed. If you want to tie on insurance, go buy it yourself.
So what? Yes, Mike?
Would we be able to set a minimum bid, so?
Well, I'm sure we could.
Try to get a property for a buck?
Yeah, I'll, no, I get your point, yeah, that's a good, that's a good idea.
But if you don't, I mean, I'll say if there's no reserve, you're going to get more people there. Because you'll get all your bargain shoppers, once again.
Do we know, like, are there back taxes, do you want any of this stuff, or no?
No, they're all current, but, uh, we own them.
Okay, okay, correct.
They're current. Um, John, what would this board need to do, or is there something they could do tonight to get that started, the, the ball rolling towards that happening?
Come up with a proposal, I mean, just tell me if you want me to talk to Zach and the mayor, and we can get a proposal for the next meeting for an auction.
Please do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we'd need, we would need a motion to direct the city attorney to begin preparing documentation and a plan to, um, auction or sell, uh, we'll refer to as the surplus city property. We need a motion to that.
City real estate.
Hmm?
City real estate.
Rec's fine, real estate, by words. It is real estate.
Right, but property could also.
Maybe we got some of that too, I don't know.
Yeah.
Property. We would need a motion.
I'll make such a motion that he just.
Do we have to state the whole thing over again?
I just moved, uh, for the city attorney to start the process.
Okay, we're motion for the city attorney to start the process to sell or auction the excess surplus city real property. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We have a motion. Okay, um, this, we had something come up, uh, today with the substation, uh, at the industrial park. As many of you know, we, we went and purchased that, we went and purchased, we had to purchase a, uh, another very, very large transformer, uh, relative at the industrial park. Uh, we found out this morning that the lightning arresters that are mounted on the transformer are physically too heavy, way too much to mount into the cabinet, uh, of this transformer, which is not exactly like the one that, you know, you move. So we need to obtain some lighter weight polymer, uh, lightning arresters, we need two of them. We only have one bid, we've sought three bids, and because this is holding up the progress, what I'm going to ask the board to do is to allow us to purchase up to this amount from Fletcher Reinhardt Company, which is, uh, the current supplier and vendor. And then if we have lower quotes come in, we will of course evaluate those quotes, and if it's, you know, apples to apples, we will go for low quote. So what I'm, if you all have this in your possession, I'd like to have, uh, a motion to approve uh, up to eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, uh, to purchase, they call them switches OH, the two switches OH for the industrial park substation.
So I'm moving.
We have a motion to approve to spend up to eight thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for two switches dash OH for the industrial park substation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. I'll try to go with this very quickly. We have, uh, an update, uh, from People Services. This updates in direct response to a request to People Services from the mayor's office to engage Black and Beach, which is the engineering company that we have had working on, on and off, on the water treatment facility since twenty twenty. Uh, and real quickly, what this is, is a very, uh, very simple, uh, cost estimate information for you all to have in your possession to review, uh, at your convenience. Uh, it's relative to adding, um, a treatment, uh, mythology, and equipment to, uh, address chloramines. The addition of chloramines, excuse me. And it's, it's, it's certainly has a lot of technical detail into it, in it, that I'm not going to even attempt to, uh, discuss in this meeting. But, uh, I want you to, if you can, and you have time, to read it, uh, and get past all the technical, uh, information that George has here, uh, to take a look at the cost. Uh, the original cost for alternative number one was under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it actually looks like, uh, alternative, alternative number one, depending upon permitting, depending upon what it costs to restart, uh, Black and Beach, uh, that we could do this along with an additional carbon, what do you call it, George, carbon what?
Uh, chlorine dioxide.
Okay, and then you had one more that we said was a, not a full-blown, uh, use of.
That was, uh, granular activated.
Granular activated carbon, possibly if the whole thing were under, under two hundred? Close?
I would hope.
Probably under two hundred.
George, I did read this, but, you know.
Yes, sir.
What, what would that get us? Does, I mean, does that keep us in the regulated ranges?
Yes, so the, uh, uh, public notice that just got mailed out, uh, was the same public notice that we've mailed out, it was one time a year for the last five years. And that's for disinfection byproducts. Uh, if you remove the disinfectant that we're currently using, which is free chlorine, and add, uh, monochloramines, that will take away the disinfection byproducts by, you know, over half. So there will still be disinfection byproducts in there, but it, it should not reach the eighty, uh, parts per billion that, uh, were regulated to. Most, most systems that have older water age or high TOC, total organic carbon, they, they do, uh, use the, uh, the monochloramines. So, uh, can and water, they use chloramines. So at some point, we would most likely have that disinfectant anyway.
And I see that there was funding, but it got pulled, when did City Chose to go, clearance can and water?
Yeah, we had, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it was, in the budget, and, uh, we were in the process of starting to, uh, we, we actually ordered majority of the stuff to make this switch over, but we sent it all back.
At a cost of?
Um, about twenty thousand dollars.
To restock it?
Yeah.
Ouch.
And now, and then, uh, if, if the next logical step was George is looking at it, of course, we're going to have all this looked at by Black and Beach, they're going to stand behind or not stand behind, they're going to help us with the, with the plans and, and looking at whatever permitting issues, uh, are out there. The next step would be the, what do you call the carbon what?
Granular activated carbon?
Yes, that's for smell and taste.
That, that, yeah, that, that, that will remove, uh, taste and odor, um, but the cost I'm worried is going to be, you know, we're, we're looking at going small scale, but, uh, I talked a bit about that just right before I got here, and he is concerned about the, the cost of that.
We will, uh.
We, we will look at every avenue, but.
Yeah, we've, we've taken the approach that, uh, what we're attempting to do, uh, to sustain uh, our, our water plant for as long as that may be required to get us to a point where we are able to make, even have discussions about alternatives. Right now, financially, we can't do it. Which can't.
So this is, it's, okay, there's lots of problems with the water, water plant, sounds like.
Well, no, the, the water plant doesn't have a lot of problems.
The treatment, sorry.
The, what it, it's, it's, uh, what's in the water?
Mm-hmm.
That the chlorine goes after whenever you add it.
Okay.
And then the water age with seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons that we have in storage also, uh, and it being a warm water source here in the summer, uh, it causes your chlorine demand to go up, and as chlorine uses itself up, it produces these byproducts. By going with monochloramines, you get rid of any additional disinfection byproducts after the treatment process.
So I think I was going to spin off what the mayor just said, if this will sustain us?
It will keep us out of violation, it will keep us from having to mail out them public notices.
It will actually improve the quality of the water we're producing. And we were given, we were given five alternatives, uh, vis a vis the studies by Black and Beach. And each one of those alternatives has a, a price tag associated with it.
Sure.
Uh, alternative num, and you have to understand, um, the confusion, uh, that exists when you contact your engineering firm and you ask them, well, why didn't we, you know, if, if choosing alternative one or two, uh, or three, in, in, of course, their cost is not incremental, it's substantial difference between alternatives. But why, why did we choose, uh, not choose those, alternative number one was the question? And they said, we don't know why you didn't choose it either. And so I have to submit to everybody here that I'm not qualified in any way, shape, or form to dispute, uh, an engineering firm like Black and Beach, they have offices all over the United States and all over Europe. If they don't know how to do water, we, I would be quite surprised. So you can see my confusion as, and I've shared it with each one of you on an individual basis, I'm like, what the heck just happened? So that's where we're at, and we're looking at using an incremental method, uh, or you might even call it modular method move forward, so it, it helps us stay within our budget and not spend money today that doesn't have to be spent until next year or the year after that, because it's an incremental phasing approach to resolving this problem, and I've spent enough time on that. On the new substation tran, I'm sorry, any more questions about that? Okay, on the new substation transformer that we purchased from Riza, upon inspection by Sunbelt, they discovered that we had a gasket, a gasket that was defective, and had we went ahead and started filling it with oil, it would have leaked, and we had to pump it back out, and yes, we had to pay someone to put it in, we'd have to pay someone to take it back out. And so Riza, upon contact, agreed to pay for its repair, vis a vis warranty, and so they are going to be paying Sunbelt for, um, that repair. And I'm glad that they caught it when they did, because it could have been a, um, very difficult situation if we had, ended up getting into some sort of a battle with a company in California. Last but not least, on my report, MPUA has contacted us and offered assistance if we need it, uh, in the future. And I think, uh, are you going to report on, uh, Connolly during your, during your report? Briefly, ten seconds worth, okay, I'll say off of that. MPUA has, uh, provided a recommended auditor that they highly recommend. If, and if, and when we get to that point. That concludes the mayor's report, so if there's no, no further questions about this one, what's been reported, uh, we'll move to the city clerk's report. Jeanette?
One thing, okay, did you post the Connie?
Yeah, the elevator.
The elevator?
You want to bring, you want to talk about it? I mean, I'm sorry, was I supposed to do that?
I'm not aware, I.
Okay, well, Connie, uh, I sent, I sent you the revised, excuse me, uh, bring everybody up to speed what's going on here. Connie elevator has been, had been working, uh, during the elevator maintenance for, I don't know, seventeen, eighteen years. Something occurred, no one here knows exactly what happened, but, uh, the city administrator, um, entered into a contractual agreement with another company. And so we have two people showing up there to do their maintenance to the elevator, the one elevator. Um, and so we attempted to get out of one of the contracts, and lo and behold, it's just not, not that easy to do. So I, I talked to him very nicely on the phone, the representative from Connie, and he nicely responded that he would reduce it by fifteen or twenty percent per month, but, you know, we're, we're much stuck. So I sent that to you for review, when you come back and say we can agree to spend less money every month, which I think it's a no-brainer, because we're going to have to pay it anyway. Oh, by the way, he was here this week, he did a fine job, he gave me his inspection report, which is really just nothing more than bill with his name on it. Uh, and of course, the other company has some things that they found wrong that they want to repair, so it's really, really interesting.
So, yeah, before the mayor talked to Connie, I sent them a letter. Basically, they got us locked in, because then the contract has a provision in it, you know, we need disputes, we have to go to Rock Island, and we'll all want to go review for the judge there. So, um, so then, but he said if the mayor would call their service technician in St. Louis, the St. Louis office would be able to offer us lower terms. So then he took.
the St. Louis office would be able to offer us lower terms. So then he took the lead to be the negotiator.
That was very tactful, but I couldn't get any more out than that.
Didn't we?
Well, they've got us over apparel.
I know, I know.
Didn't we, they were two elevated re- maintenance companies, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And did we make a motion to keep one and terminate one?
Yes.
Or is that, is this the one we chose to keep?
This is the one we're supposed to terminate, but they won't let us.
But we can't, we have a contract.
Yeah, it'll end in, I think, twenty twenty-five, so my thought would be option two is the lesser of all the, the three equals.
Oh, and they contracted the other one for five years too.
Okay, do, what do we do with that motion that's hanging out there that said we're going with the other company?
Well, make a new motion and override it.
Yeah, what's, what's...
Because we're under contract with both of them already, so...
What happens with the contract with the other? Are we gonna have similar problem?
Well, if we did option two, I'm not sure if you know when the other one expired.
Um...
Later.
Well, uh, if it was, if it was done last year and had a five years, we're probably looking at twenty twenty-eight.
So, yeah, so, I'd say at, at least, I mean, we don't want option three, I mean, yeah, forty percent discount for another five years.
Yeah, 'cause we can't get out the other one either without...
Yeah.
So we're gonna pay both of them?
Correct. And what, what the whole purpose of me making the call was to try to pay less to one of them, and it's only gonna be about fifteen percent less. It's, it's, what do you do? We, we, we would spend more money, we would spend more money fighting than we'd ever say.
This is unfortunate.
Well, we'll just do everything we can to, when, when we run across things like this, we'll address them to the best of our ability, which is what we're doing.
So back to the original point that they were both in and did an inspection this week?
Not the same time. Uh, Coney was here this week, and he gave a good bill of health. Uh, Alex, what did the other company say they had to go buy? We, I'm sorry, well, we had to go buy.
Motherboard or some kind of switch panel?
A motherboard, yeah.
Yeah, Jeanette is, what is the fire panel?
I think I'm curious what...
The fire panel part?
Yes.
I mean, and Coney is who we've been doing business with since we first put in the elevator. I mean, they sent our original contract, which was like twenty years old, so...
Is there an auto renew that they're gonna get, get us on if we don't?
Oh, yes.
Notify them?
Yeah, we, we, someone's gonna be paying attention, or the, or, or the, the, the second company has an auto renew.
Yeah.
It is what it is. I don't, I don't know what else to say. Jeanette? Are you?
Are we gonna, do we need to choose an option for this?
Not until he reviews it.
Well, I would go to the forward with option two. I mean, at least it's a fifteen percent discount.
Without extending it, yeah.
Or, I should say, the second bullet point, that's probably confusing.
Right.
The fifteen percent discount, yeah.
I'll make a motion to, um, is it renew contract or extend contract, or what is it?
Uh, renegotiate.
To renegotiate the contract, um, with Coney, using the second bullet point, which requires notes the extension of the term to existing contract and a fifteen percent discount.
We have a motion on the floor, I can't say that.
Um...
I can't repeat that.
It's no extension of the terms of the existing contract with fifteen percent discount.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to modify the existing contract with Coney. Do we have a second? We have a motion second to modify the existing contract with Coney. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes.
I don't know what the, that other motion was that was made, but I feel like we need to address that. Because I thought it was true.
I think it was just to authorize me to reach out to them about termination.
I thought we selected the other company about that motion, maybe?
Maybe at the next meeting, we just need to...
Yeah, let's, let's address that at the next meeting, and we'll have time to go back to that.
But also, we need to be sure to mark, someone needs to mark their calendar, or when that, so we don't get it. I don't know, I miss the charts, but we don't wanna...
Read that contract to see if it's a ninety days prior to term.
Yeah, whatever we have to do to execute.
Oh, good point, good point.
Have a calendar of something.
No, we have, Coney contract has a termination paragraph, but what we need to do, so, I'll read it.
Sorry, that, that's crazy.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeanette.
Um, just got a few things. Um, on my report, I provided the general fund balance, and that is one million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. And the sweep account balance was seven hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and this was out of six ten. Um, so it is not included in the accounts payable, this presented to us earlier this week. I did provide a copy of the bank statement, um, just so you can kinda see, uh, what that is. And the next item is the United Systems quote that they provided us regarding the fire panel. Um, there is an email there, there's a email there explaining. And I did see the panel myself, and it just worked. I mean, those areas that he was talking about probably.
This is on the elevator, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So we had, we had, we had Coney come in and do an inspection, and they didn't
They didn't check.
flag this. And now we got another company comes in and they
It's an obvious issue.
found it, flagged it. Do, is there, mm, probably not a good idea to even go down that road, I guess, I saw.
But it's a separate fire panel, it's still attached to the elevator.
It is, yes, uh-huh.
Yeah.
That has to do with the relay.
So where, would we call it that there was an issue?
Yes. So when, when Coney says that they didn't find this, we can't go back and say, I mean, like, you didn't find this, so you're...
I don't know, he says, she said, I don't know.
Because I didn't do it at the top.
We'll find a qualified expert to, to mediate.
Oh, yeah, we gotta go to, go to city, you know.
I noticed there were six smoke detectors on there, is that, like, the whole building?
I believe it's just the elevator arm.
Six smoke detectors.
Six smoke detectors.
On, uh, yeah, see, six intelligent optic detectors, smoke detectors. Or maybe in the middle of that.
What you're saying is we, we need to replace this. Yeah, right.
We would need a motion to approve spending three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, sixty-nine cents to United Systems for this replacement and repair of this fire board on the elevator. We have a motion.
I kinda feel like we need to have Coney back down here and say, hey, this is what we got. Do they, do they know we have each, each one on, under contract with both?
Yes, if they're aware, there's another company.
So what does it hurt to get a second opinion?
It wouldn't hurt anything, I'm just curious why they didn't find it.
Well, that's what I'm... Do we have to pay them for a service call, another service call? Is that an extra expense to get them back down here to see?
They probably would charge to come take a look at it.
Can we take pictures?
Especially since their, I think their closest office is St. Peter's or somewhere.
It's an hour, I think it's drive time, which is on the invoice, like an hour to fifteen minutes.
Can we take pictures?
Well, yeah, can we take a picture and send this and say, hey, send the dates and say, can you please explain?
What are you all into? Yeah. Or what about just another fire alarm company? Getting a bid from them and say, hey, look at this, and what are your thoughts? It's like, what's your bid?
I, I would recommend that we take pictures of the problem and send them a copy of this and say, why, why did you miss?
Why wasn't this noted in twenty-four here last?
And you have the dates over here, so it's not like it happened after they came, correct?
Yeah, this was
Prior to.
Prior to.
Yeah, so Coney came after this inspection, oh, yeah.
But Coney was just here this week, and this, uh, quote for these repairs was June third, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh...
Just give us an answer, we were paying them money.
It never occurred to me to bring it up. I'm not even sure I was even...
Well, I don't think you should have to. If they're there doing the inspection, it's something they should see. It might be.
Well, if there was an opportunity, I missed it. We're gonna have to take it, we're gonna have to take it.
By them stall, or is someone with them when they do it? What's the standard procedure for that?
Well, Coney came by themselves to do inspections, we...
Right, but is Alex or is anybody else supervising them, or?
I would suggest we just take a picture, send it, ask why there's a discrepancy, and then maybe next, maybe, is that too late? No, is it until we fix it, or not? Is it closed, elevator closed, Jeanette?
And the elevator's still functional, right?
What?
It's still functional, right?
It's still functional, yeah. I mean, if there's a fire?
On, yeah, I was gonna say, on the liability side, by, by choosing to push this out, does that create a liability?
If some...
Something more aware of it.
John?
Possibly. I just, I mean, I think Coney should respond to us in a day, and if we send pictures and scan on this and say, hey, what's up?
Can we respond by email, I mean, after the fourth next meeting, I don't know.
Do, is there any difficulty in getting access to this board to take photographs of it?
Oh, no.
Okay, Alex?
Alex.
You left? Oh, shucks, put it on Alex's list. We'll get Alex to take a picture of it.
I think, maybe, he might have gone to take a picture.
Okay. So what do you wanna do with this, nothing?
I would at least try, I mean, I'd make them give us a response as to why they didn't find it, before we just...
When, uh, Coney finds something defective on the elevator, we still have to pay for it.
And we probably will pay for it anyway.
Okay, just the idea that they totally missed it.
This is the board in there, so it's all...
Oh, nice. Is it screaming?
Mm-hmm.
Is it screaming, buzzing all the time?
It was, and they turned it off.
They cleared it?
Yes.
They turned it off.
So it's a valid find.
There's the panel, and there's where it's burned.
Barbecue. Hmm?
So we probably do it again. We are.
We're accomplishing, you think?
No.
Are we, are we table work?
Okay, we'll be all right.
Can we just table it till the next meeting?
Okay, let's table this, um, table this for the next meeting.
Um, I did obtain one bid for the cemetery stone repairs that was provided by D J V.
You did.
Okay, and its total bid was three thousand dollars on it.
See, that comes, uh, that, that funding would come from, uh, the parks, uh, and the cemetery, correct? Okay.
And we get five thousand budget for it, correct?
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid provided by DJV Construction for repairs of cemetery stones.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the quotation from DJV Construction for the, we're from, reset, we're from resetting the stones at St. Jude's, so...
We were talking about the, uh, the altar stone.
I don't know what we're gonna do about that. Yeah, I mean, we, uh, we could ask him to quote it separately.
Right.
It looks like he's...
He may, he may be willing to do it, just because he's already doing it. Or we could make straightening that stone a condition of receiving the, receiving the business.
But we wouldn't end the bid.
I know.
Thanks.
We have a motion, I'm a second.
We have a motion second on the floor to, uh, approve, uh, the bid from DJV Construction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Contact DJV.
The next item is the annual Murma conference. This is the conference that Melon has attended in the past, and when you don't attend, Murma does dock us points on our annual evaluation significantly. The meeting is set for July twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth down at the, where the Ozarks. Uh, Alex handles all of our insurance, he deals with all the department managers on getting their, uh, weekly, check, park checks done, truck checks done, things of that nature, and he would benefit greatly from going to his conference. There's a lot of useful information there. It's also open to council and mayor to attend as well, um, so if anyone is interested and would like to go, then we can get that arranged as well.
Margaritabell.
If I can swing it...
That's worth that.
We talked about this the other day. If I can swing it on the way back from Branson, then I would be checking in a little late, because I've got training in Branson on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I could check in late Wednesday night.
If we register after July eleventh, or, I'm sorry, July twelfth, there is a small increase in the cost, so...
But you could still make it, correct?
I should be able to. I need to kind of verify what work that they can...
But at this time, we would just need a motion to approve the expenses associated with the conference for, um, staff and elected officials.
I maintain that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the cost for staff and officials to attend the annual Murma meeting, July twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion second to approve going to the Murma meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Um, I did provide you some information from, um, Jackie on dinner ledger and bank rec update there. And she's also here tonight, if, uh, you have anything you'd like to, um, ask as well. She's working very hard on it.
Let's be Kate's initial statement, bank?
Bank.
Okay, all right.
Uh, budget, of course, I have that included as well. Um, the discussion items on here, I would just like for you all to review these and get your thoughts on some of these items, because one of them is endpoints that are being destroyed when people mow the yard, and the endpoints are needed to get our water readings, uh, to our gateway and for them to come back and get our readings here in the office. Those cost a hundred and thirty-five dollars a piece to buy, and we are replacing them at no charge right now.
Why are we replacing them at no charge?
There was, uh, I brought it to the board numerous times, and we never, there was never a decision made, or, uh, you know, we never notified.
I thought we did.
I thought you did.
I thought so too.
I do not remember there being...
You know, when that, you know, when that occurred?
I actually thought we sent it out in the mailer as well.
Yeah, I'm almost certain.
Do you know when that would have taken place, and I can look through some meeting minutes, possibly?
It would have been just before they replaced mine, because I said that I would be the first one that would need it.
Yeah.
And mine was replaced before it happened.
Okay, associate with that, George bought forth a recommendation to do something to stop that from happening.
It was the plastic lids, like I put at your house. It was the plastic lids, like I put at your house. Uh, the, uh, the endpoint is actually inset, so if you run into this thing or, or hit it with your lawnmower, you're gonna hurt your lawnmower before you actually get to the endpoint. But, uh.
There's a cost associated with that.
I was twenty-seven dollars, I believe, per lid. And.
Plus time to install.
Yeah, plus time, but that's, you guys are already paying the people service, so we would do that.
Would it make sense that, um, when, when someone destroys one of these, what do you call them, endpoints?
Endpoint, yes.
Endpoints, that as a matter of course, we, when we replace the in, I guess, replace the endpoint, we put one of these lids things on it?
I am currently doing that, I do have some in stock. We have put out a few hundred of them, uh, that I, I think I have fifty left. So, um, you know, there is, there's gonna be a cost to that, but, uh.
Well, the cost would be potentially less in the long run, however, if we were instructed to start charging a landowner for damaging these and we're not, then we need to fix that first.
Right.
If that's the correct way to say it. All right.
Another issue we run into every month is locked fences, locked gates at properties, our meter reader technicians are not able to give into the yards to give them install a number of customers, which requires them to go back to the property two, three times, taking time out of what they're already doing and go. So, just if you all wanna think about if there's a solution to that problem, um, you know, what we could, look at possibly getting there. At some point, of course, all of our meters will be re-electronized, so we won't have that issue, but for right now, uh, most of them are gas meters and of course, that's gonna be the last thing we transition to.
What, what would be an appropriate reaction to that?
Can I, if we worked out something?
Yeah, I just put that letter together, um, for the guys to post on the customer's floor. We have tried this a few times in the past itself, sometimes if you don't get a reply, then you can tell us.
So what, what would you like to do? Would you like for the board to approve the use of that or are you already using it?
I'm already using it, it's just a.
Well, I said nothing.
But it's not effective.
I don't know if there's any other option you all want to consider, I mean, just something to think about for now.
Okay.
Well, don't let us forget that.
Okay.
She won't.
Has there been any response to the letters at all?
A few people have called us and said, my, my gate will be unlocked tomorrow, the guys will come read our meter tomorrow. Some people, they just choose something for us.
Can, when, when we print our utility bills, can we, when we print the next one, this, and that, I really can't probably get it done, but would it be appropriate to be able to print, put onto the utility bill, some sort of notice that we're gonna be reading, reading meters on these days? Please keep your whatever unlocked or accessible?
We did just do a mass mailing and there was information.
Okay, good, good.
I don't recall that there mentioned the days of the month we read, that there was mention of the, uh, gate and fences being locked. And just the other item was up here on policy, I just provided back, as we did discuss that, uh, a couple of meetings ago, just for your. I was on, I'm gonna ask you all something. Oh, yeah, save the date.
What time is that?
I'm sorry?
What time is that?
I, right now, they're just letting you know the date it's gonna take place, it's usually in the evening, uh, six, seven o'clock usually.
Right.
And since they all have their turn up for it, it's usually, it is at Madison, we know.
Oh, it's the last page.
I was just trying to figure whether or not if you put with this maybe or not, no.
Oh.
Yeah.
Which minute?
The fourteenth of November.
November.
Yeah.
Can we have a little discussion about, um, the work Jackie's doing, just 'cause I have people constantly ask me about it, like, go through it. Jackie?
This one.
How, I mean, have we gotten any additional months completed in the general ledger?
So here's what we're doing, um, what I'm doing, the, like, the best statements that she gave you.
Uh-huh.
I have been taking the statements and going through each one, comparing those with what is in our bank reconciliation program downstairs. Because theoretically, if you check it right, if you cable anything coming in or outside of account, it needs to be in that bank reconciliation program. It is not, um, by a long shot. So I'm having to go through each month, I had a list, what, forty-five, fifty pages of, of outstanding checks and deposits that have not been cleared in our bank rec because it hasn't been done since October twenty-two. Um, so I am going through each month, pulling those out, moving into a separate worksheet, so, and I've got all of those done. So everybody's in their separate worksheet now for each month and each bank rec. Now I'm going back through, seeing what's left that's still showing outstanding and matching it, trying to get it matched up with our actual bank statements. So that's where I'm at. It's a long process, um, it's not what we can do overnight, I'm gonna invest I can with it, um, there's just a lot of stuff, you know, simple things like you get an ECAT payment, the state puts in your account five thousand dollars. Problem is, you've got twenty entries in your bank rec because they put, you get individual one as a separate one, so now you have to find all those, make them equal to that deposit. So, we get in there.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, I just hadn't really, we hadn't dove deep into it, we're not just asking questions.
Yeah, no, that's, I mean, it's just very time consuming process.
I think that, uh, the board's going to be, um, very soon is going to be, uh, taking some, uh, action that will, uh, allow us to have some additional resources. What we'll do is we'll free up some current resources to, uh, assist with this process and we'll be talking about that probably, uh, very soon.
One other thing I wanted to mention too, um, I did, I was at a previous employee's desk the other day and I found a folder on the desk and located about twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of checks in this folder that hang up in the positive dating back to February. So, we're still finding things, luckily that was a good thing, I mean, it was, but, um, I did get all that posted in, bank rec, general ledger, that's all, that's all I remember. Some of them were taxes, tax revenue from accounting, um, things like that.
They're not stale yet, at least.
I'm sorry?
They're not stale yet, at least. Couple of questions, I guess, in a statement more on the, on the bank balance or on the roster. So, I know some people weren't sure about our large industrial customer.
Yes.
Um, am I correct on this seventy-two? Is that true? I just wanted to say that they're making weekly payments, um, for a total of seventy-two thousand dollars a month to their current usage. And they're making a, it's two payments every week and then they're making a total for the month of twenty-eight thousand seventy-four dollars eighty-four cents towards their arrears. And they've been consistently paying that every week.
Are we talking, we talking about Missouri Murma Conference?
Yeah.
Okay, they sent an email this week, uh, asking for us to provide, uh, to them, uh, our accounting records showing payments um, and, and the amount currently, um, in arrears based on the original contract. That was done today, uh, Michael Carr, who's the owner of Cornerstone Investments and also Cornerstone Casting, which is a different, they own that. He sent us an email requesting this information that say within the email that they're working on a plan to get current by August first of this year. So, well, I, I've, I've, I've learned to not get too enthusiastic. Uh, but I think it's en- I'm not gonna say it, it's encouraging.
But this is a Shelby City.
But they have consistently.
They've been consistent.
They've been doing what they said it was gonna do.
Yeah.
And I think that says something.
I think, Danette, I mean, not to jump in, but I think Danette's done a great job of staying on top of that.
Yes.
Because that's what's making the town, and the mayor too.
Danette and Alex both have been, uh, doing a really good job.
Yes.
Um, I, I failed, I failed to provide recognition to someone, uh, very early in my, uh, discussion. I, I think you'll be okay with this, I know I'm taking up your valuable time. But, uh, in trying toward with Missouri Department of Revenue, um, we did pay fifty thousand dollars, it's not the fifty thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine twenty-seven cents. Uh, it was, it was, uh, because the city of Monroe City failed to pay, um, their sales tax remittances for January, February, April, May, June, twenty twenty-three, five-month period. Uh, that penalty was fifty thousand, oh, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, of that, twenty-three something was penalty. The other part was interest, which we can't argue the interest. Um, State Center, Cindy O'Laughlin's office offered assistance. Lisa Garrison from her office and a gentleman whose first name is Brogan, whose last name I can't recall, have been nothing short of absolutely amazing. They've gotten people to make phone, I've been on the phone where I sat on the phone for an hour waiting for someone to just pick up so they can tell me they can't help us. Lisa and Brogan have been wonderful and Senator O'Laughlin's office has been fantastic. So if you ever meet up with any of these people, tell them thank you. Because they've done things that, well, golly gee, they didn't really have to do, they did and I appreciate it. And we can thank, uh, Phil Potterfield, uh, for making initial contact, uh, with Cindy. And so we, we appreciate Mr. Potterfield's efforts to help the city of Monroe City as well. And I'll give it back to you.
I think that was all I had.
Okay.
I just gotta mention this.
Next on the agenda is the city attorney's report.
Uh, we've covered a lot of the things that the mayor and I have been talking about, uh, two things. Penny, are you gonna talk about the golf course or?
Wasn't playing on.
Okay, well, you've got the golf courses contract here.
Yes.
Um, it's for a one-year term, so the mayor and I have been going back and forth with them and basically it's continuing the current terms for this coming year.
So same, same contract, just for a year?
Right.
Okay.
It doesn't have the, I think the previous one was like four or five years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is a one-year contract.
Okay.
If I may add, the most recent invoices received from Mosswood for, I guess you call it turf fertilizer.
Yes.
They did submit that, we did pay them.
They paid a portion.
Yeah.
Of them, and so we're gonna reimburse for that portion they paid, yes.
I believe I signed that today, if I can remember correctly.
Uh, other thing to report to the board is we're closing tomorrow on the real estate sale to the Green Hiller, so.
Uh, we, we signed, uh, on the what?
Elevator.
On the elevator.
The elevator buying the lot, I need to.
Oh, we signed that today, yeah, we signed that today.
But, yeah, the closing's tomorrow, so.
Okay, so.
So I'll take the D J V?
Uh, I can get it from you or I'll get it tomorrow.
Okay.
That worked perfect, it's ready for you.
All right.
It's ready.
And that's all I got.
Next item on the agenda is our authorized guest speakers, the Monroe City Area Fire Protection District, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, we're welcome, thank you for giving me a little bit of time here, I've got members of the Board of Directors from the Fire District out here as well. My name is Carl Scarborough, I represent the, uh, Fire Protection District. Um, I wanna talk about the tax levy that they have placed on the ballot. First, I wanted to dive into just a little bit of history of the indulgence for a minute, I promise I won't take long 'cause I don't know that everybody knows the history here with the district and the city. Um, the Fire Protection District was actually formed by a lot of people in two thousand, so it's at this point about twenty-four years old. It was a jointly supported process with the World Fire Association, uh, and, uh, the city of Monroe City as well. Um, and I would refer to people, uh, that, that issue did pass and the Fire District was formed, the Fire Protection District was formed, which includes the city of Monroe City. Unfortunately, the levy that was placed on the ballot at that time failed, uh, and so there was no tax support. Um, so there was a little bit of scrambling that took place, I obviously was not involved with any of that, so I'm, I'm relating mythology and legend and things that I've been able to, to drag up from, uh, the court paperwork. There were, uh, there were other attempts at trying to pass that tax levy, none of them, uh, were successful. And so what ultimately happened is that the Fire Protection District and the city entered into a series of, uh, joint agreements for the provision of fire service. Their, uh, the most recent one was in twenty twenty-one and, uh, I think that was probably at the behest of an auditor, if I understand correctly. Um, but there were multiples dating back to two thousand and one. Um, and what happened really is that everything sort of remained status quo, nothing changed over the course of time. Uh, and, uh, a lot of things that probably should have not gotten dropped did get dropped and some lines got blurred and and we've, we've ended up in a situation here where, um, you know, there, there, there are some, you know, ongoing questions about how this thing is operating. Um, the, the, the bottom line is, is that there are, there are problems with that current status quo. And I've had, uh, multiple conversations with the, the Fire Board, Mr. Russell and I have talked on multiple times, I've met the mayor as well. The problem is that the current model of operations and of funding, um, really isn't in the best interest of the citizens, it's not in the best interest of the city, it's not in the best interest of the Fire District. And quite frankly, it's, it's not sustainable, um, and it won't, it won't be something that will sustain the level of protection that needs to be, uh, sustained, uh, especially if you're to guarantee some sort of growth, uh, over, over the next few years. This is the reason the Fire District decided in New York to put this tax levy on the ballot. They placed a thirty-cent tax levy on the August ballot. That thirty-cent property tax levy would, uh, in, in our estimation, generate the necessary funds, uh, through tax dollars beginning, uh, in January into passes, um, to provide the same operating level uh, that is currently being funded right now between, uh, the funds that are going back and forth between the two different entities. And, and so that's based upon the assessed valuations that we have, um, which are a, a little bit of an estimate because frankly, it's not possible to get a, a specific assessed valuation for the Fire Protection District right now because they've never had a tax levy and so no one can produce that for us. Um, so that's something we're obviously gonna have to work through as we get a little bit closer. So what we're, we're looking for at this point is, um, I'm gonna continue to, to work with Mr. Russell on sort of untangling the tangles that exist as it relates between the, the Fire District and, and the city and at some point we'll be coming back to you again and saying, here's, here's what we think is a, a plan, uh, for, for completely sort of disentangling these things. Uh, hopefully with proper support, this tax levy will pass in August. Uh, and it will be a, a methodology for getting this Fire Protection District standing up on its own and operating the way that, um, that, uh, we would hope that it would have been in two thousand. Again, we, we're asking for the city's support on this, we know you're a little bit on what you can do in terms of, you know, political action, uh, but, uh, you know, each of you has a word that you represent and people talk to you, so tell them how important it is and, and, uh, we, we, we hope that, uh, we hope that this thing passes in August. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or speak to any, uh, you know, concerns if, if I can. Uh, I have some limitations on what I, I can get into as far as having answers to everything, but I'm, I'm happy to take a swing at anything.
The, the levy would be in multiple counties that you rep, the district represent?
So if I, so if I understand correctly, the, the Monroe City Area Fire Protection District covers, it has, has a, a footprint in four separate counties. So it would be in entirety of that district. It essentially shadows the school district footprint with a little, a couple parcels are carved out. So, so yeah, so we get to deal with four different counties when we do stuff, so that's awesome. Um, yeah, it's a lot of fun. But, uh, you know, it is what it is. So yeah, so it would be in all four counties at that point. That's one of the challenges with coming up with that assessment valuation right now is just there's no, you know, it just hasn't been done and we, we have to basically coordinate the bodies to get it done, so. So obviously, we'll get it done this fall at some point. Anything else I can answer for you?
I have a question.
Yes.
When the initial tax levy was proposed back in two thousand, it seems to me, and again, I could be well-faced, there was something written, uh, within the ballot, I think, that explains some change, uh, in taxes that citizens would, I hate to use the word no longer, will pay less. And then the rural, uh, people who live in the ruralers would obviously now have a new levy. I never could quite understand how that works. And here, and I'll explain the reason why. Based on our, uh, review, and trust me, I, I fully comprehend, we may not have it right. I think we did. We have not been able to identify any source of revenue within the fire department budget beyond it coming directly out of general revenue.
So you're speaking to a, like a dedicated fire department tax, is what you're?
Right. We can't find one.
And, and I'll, I'll defer, uh, to, to you folks on that. I'm not aware of one existing.
Yeah.
I will tell you that the language of the original petition that would have been filed back in two thousand had language in there that related to repeal of a city, not a city tax, but a rollback of the property tax levy within the city.
Equal to.
Equal to.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I got it. I got it. Is that something that's going to be revisited on the new ballot?
It, it's not a ballot question. That issue is not something that goes on our ballot. So that's something that was in that original petition. So when you, when you petition for a fire district, you face a petition to a circuit judge, take the petition, they look at it, they give it their blessing, and then at that point, it has to go to a board of people, goes out. Um, and you put together plans for things like what happens with the fire trucks that may already exist. How's the coverage done? What are the boundaries? What's the name? All those types of things. So that was part of that original petition back in two thousand. And of course, it failed, and so there was, the city didn't take any action. But the, the rollback of any, of any levy is gonna be a city question. That's gonna be a city, uh, issue to take up. Um, it's not on the ballot question. It's not part of anything that I'm advocating at this point that the fire district used as a, a sale point in terms of trying to get this thing passed.
Good.
Um, you know, um, because, in part because it's been almost two and a half decades at this point.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing that time flew that fast, but, uh, I'm glad to hear that it isn't, quite frankly.
Yeah. So, um, now, you know, as I said, your, your, your counsel can speak to that. I think, you know, as to whether he thinks there's anything that, uh, the city should take up at that point. But, uh, we're certainly not, we're not beating that drum or waving that flag at this point. One of the subsequent levies, um, was an attempt at twenty-seven cents. And so there was a statement from the city at that time that they would roll the levy back twenty-seven cents to accommodate that. Of course, that levy didn't pass either, so again, it's moved. But, you know, there were, there were some, some attempts early on to try and outthink how. I just don't know that that's either appropriate or necessary at this point. Uh, this, this fire district needs to be funded, and so this, this has to be, this has gotta pass one way or the other. It's, it's gotta get through there and, and hopefully everybody supports that.
I'm actually glad to hear that. Uh, what, I think what would be beneficial, uh, is, uh, if, 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 if this is appropriate, I don't know what all the rules and regulations are about, uh, how a city may or may not get behind, uh, a ballot issue. But what, what would, uh, the board, your board like for us to do? I, 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 I think I can speak for about, no, I don't, no one opposes us that I'm aware of. Uh, what, what would you like for us to do? How could, how could, what, what steps can we take that would be beneficial to support, uh, the passing of this, of this ballot issue?
Well, I, I, so as a, as a public entity, you'd be limited in any sort of official action that you could take. So, you know, the city can't donate funds to a campaign and the city can't do anything in kind. So the board, you know, can't, really shouldn't even vote a note of support or anything like that.
I kinda thought so, but I wanted to hear from you.
That's right. Um, and so we would not request that or any of puts you into a, a potential situation to get crossways with the state statute.
As, as individuals, without using our elected titles, can we say, I know I can't say, well, the mayor said you ought to do this or that. I can't do that, I don't think.
You can't do it in your official capacity, but you, you, you obviously talk to people. You obviously.
Sure do.
Have the opportunity to, to spread the information. We'd ask that you spread that information. I think very shortly, you're gonna start seeing, uh, some literature that's gonna come out from the fire district.
Good.
You're gonna see some things on social media. Feel free to share it. Um, there's, uh, there'll be at least one, uh, town hall opportunity where, you know, questions are gonna get answered by the fire district. And, and, you know, we encourage people to show up for that. We encourage you to show up for that if you have questions at that point as well. If you've got questions, reach out to the fire board members, um, and they'll, they'll get you those answers as to why this is, this is so important at this point. Um, and I, I, I think, and the other thing is, is that honestly, it's important for the city as well uh, because there has been fiscal impact to the city, I think that's fair to say, uh, that relates back to the ongoing management and running of this department as well as an impact on the Fire Protection District. And the fact that the two entities are still inclined with one another is part of that problem. And the only way we can, we can, we can get that taken care of is to get the district funded so that it's going on its own two feet. And I think, I think the city will see the benefit of that once it happens as well. You cease to have responsibility at that point, and, uh, that, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I thank you for, uh, coming before us and.
Thank you.
Explaining, uh, what the board is doing. I wish you all the best.
Okay. Don't forget to.
I'm trying to be very careful what I say. I don't wanna get drunk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming very much. Thank you.
I just wanna say one thing real quick. Anytime I've been in meetings or had anything related to a budget item, we've always been told that you can always educate all you want on the public, but you can never advocate for something.
Educate, but not advocate. I like that. Okay, council committee reports. Planning and zoning? Nothing. Parks and cemetery?
July ninth is the deadline for that north park. Grant.
The city's, uh, city's commitment on that is what, approximately? Do you know?
The city's portion would be two hundred and fifty thousand. It's a five hundred thousand dollar grant opportunity. Ours would be fifty percent. Some of that can be in kind. Uh, meaning, you know, they could, I don't know.
Fifty percent of the two hundred plus can be in kind. I know the city, one of the, one of the responsibilities in that project planning is excavation. A lot of excavation, uh, is required. We're gonna have to get, sit down and take a look at it. Where am I, where I'm going at right now in my mind, I wish I knew what our financial commitment was, uh, on Mill Street. If there's gonna be any of that fund left over that we have to spend by the fall of twenty twenty-six. So, and also, uh, I don't see that, it gets sticky because I don't know how, I don't know if you can use ARPA funds uh, directly for that, but you can use ARPA funds as revenue replacement, in which case it doesn't matter. It just now goes in the pool. So we, we got a lot of work ahead of us, folks. It's, it's not been.
They, they need an answer.
That's what I thought they needed.
So do we need to, like, schedule some people meeting with them? I don't know. We need to get a resolution.
I, do we?
We have one more council meeting, don't we?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, do we need to meet outside of the council meeting with them and, like, figure out what we sit here and don't know the answers to? And to?
I would, I would suggest that we get, uh, the Parks and Cemetery Committee to schedule a meeting as soon as possible. Uh, which board members would like to attend?
Who's on that board?
Who's on the committee?
Penny, Penny on that, aren't you?
Hi.
Penny and.
Who from that? I mean, we, we have people on that board, yeah.
At least two aldermen on the board.
Does if we could, can we do any of the excavating and have that town is in kind?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we can. Uh, we need to have Kevin there.
Two of them.
Kevin needs to be there so he can be aware of what the commitment's gonna look like on the state.
We have only Greg Smith as the only alderman that's on that.
Excuse me?
Greg is the only one.
Greg's it?
Steve Yates, Darren Kendrick, Matt Perrine, Greg Smith, Penny Fulton, Vicki Holland, Donnie Hayes, street department manager.
Okay, so it's just Greg? Okay, that doesn't prevent anyone else, unless, though, anyone else from attending.
Right.
Right.
Who would like to attend? Mike would you like to attend?
Sure.
Rob, would you like to attend?
Depends when it is.
Well, we can try to work around equal schedules.
Yeah.
I think Mike is probably.
More flexible.
More flexible than, than, than some.
I mean, if they wanna do it during the day, it's probably work better. I cannot. But if they wanna do it in the evening, perhaps I can, yeah.
Greg's gonna.
They generally do them in the evening.
Greg, Greg has to do it in the evening.
At six o'clock.
Say it again?
Greg generally has to do them in the evening.
Yeah, after, usually after six o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
You need to have Mary Kendrick or Wendy Hayes at this meeting as well.
Who, who is that?
They're the ones that wrote the grant.
Mary Kendrick.
Wendy Hayes. And they will be, they have two questions.
Wendy Hayes, they wrote the grant.
Good idea. We need to schedule a meeting.
Yes.
So we can meet.
Mary Kendrick.
Generally.
Jeff's wife.
Mary Kendrick and who?
Wendy Hayes.
Wendy Hayes, okay.
So who's gonna do, what are, what are we gonna do?
Cause what's gonna have to happen, we're gonna have to make a decision or go on, go on to the next meeting.
Yeah, so we need to.
Need to be.
Meet between now and.
Hold on, I gotta look.
The other thing is, I mean, I, do we know how much is in this cemetery fund?
You mean the Parks and?
Yeah, Parks, Parks and Cemetery.
That's gonna be one of the main.
Well, it's, it's, um, i- if you look, if you look at what we do have available, which is the ending of twenty twenty-one, barring other unknowns, the, the fund balance should easily support that.
Are the cities able to?
Which that's not accurate, though, either, the fund balance.
Well, let me, let me try it a different way. If we take the ending balance from, from even the last fully audited, uh, statement, which was twenty nineteen, we would have had to spend a significant amount of money out of that fund because there's, there has been continual inputs into that because of the tax. What I'm trying to say is if you look at what their balance was in twenty nineteen, you look what the average, uh, tax, tax money that goes into that account, unless we can account for some substantial expenditures in Parks and Cemetery, it should still be there.
I, I don't know. I mean, Robert, I know she's familiar with grants and everything, but LWCA, I, it's very detailed.
Oh.
Very, very.
I, I.
What do, what do you, what do you, what are you suggesting?
I, I mean, I, I don't have an answer by any means, but, uh, you never wanna turn it down, Grant, but.
What if we try to reach out to those that wrote it and, when I, we have a lot more information?
I'd like to see a copy of it. I mean, I.
I, I.
I think we just need to schedule a meeting, schedule a meeting with the two people and get some more information and then be able to come to the next council meeting with the recommendation.
I'm going to say something, uh, without the benefit of having a date in front of us. I suspect that there's a great deal more discovery awaiting us when it comes to the remission, remittance of, uh, Missouri Sales Tax Revenue, Department of Revenue, because we just dealt with something that occurred in the beginning of twenty twenty-two. And what am I, what am I trying to say about saying it? I don't know. We, I know what the accounting would say we have, but because it's two-plus years of chaos, I can't sit here and tell you we can afford to even do the Parks thing. I can tell you, yeah, if you look at the data, you look at the numbers, and you say, well, we had a tax going into it, this is what was there, and this is what was spent, and yeah, it should be there. Uh, our day of reckoning may soon come at hand about August of this year. Well, we'll, we know where all those fund balances are at, and we may have a shocking surprise. And part of that surprise and shock may be due to penalties and interest on errors that were made long before any of us were even here.
But also, I, I don't know. I'm speaking, I don't know. But if proper accounting would be, we shouldn't pay those funds out of that fund anyway.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
I mean, even if we're short, it doesn't matter, but, but I know what you're saying totally, but those funds can't be used for that expense.
But they may have been.
I'm, yes, they have been, but we can't spend it that way.
No.
No.
Right.
But I think he might be indicating the money's getting smaller, smaller.
The bill maybe is getting bigger.
The bills are getting bigger.
I mean, we, we, we spent over, what, a million and a half in the last four weeks, oh, eight weeks? Easily a million and a half.
Unlessed.
Penalties and interest?
No.
Uh, on accounts payable, all of them were accounts payable. Everything was approved or approved by this board. And then we had, we had fourteen thousand, we haven't paid yet because we didn't get the financial report done at the end of March, which is no one in this room is responsible for that. Uh, fifty thousand dollars in penalties for five months at the beginning of twenty twenty-two. Uh, my concern within that, when I was talking about this, now, it's a public forum, I have to, I, I, it's okay to say it. I don't know what the hell is waiting on us, and no one has access to the, to the account to even look at it, which is why, you know, we went to Central O'Laughlin's office and said, for God's sake, help us. Every day that goes by is another day of, we don't know what.
Yeah.
And the same issue exists with the, the United States Treasury. We don't have access to all the data for the ARPA funds, but it's sitting in our account supposedly five hundred thousand dollars. Go look at our total bank balance. Take five hundred thousand for ARPA, take, 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 uh, the, the money, the, the, that, the.
The four hundred thousand, then we're done.
Fire Protection District wants, which is another four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Still have that transfer to pay.
We, we, we're gonna rattle money real quick. So I apologize for, you know, being a, someone out there screaming wolf, but I don't know what else to say. We're paying our bills that are due. There are bills that the city made. They're either, you know, they're, they're either to MPUA for gas, MPUA for electric. We're gonna get there. We're gonna have some answers for the board. And they will be the answers, and they will be factual, and they will be truthful. And we will have to make whatever decisions we have to make in order to keep operating this city. And, um, I wish it was easy to answer these questions, but right now, we don't have answers. Am I concerned? Absolutely. Do I sleep at night? Not always. And it's not mine. I don't own it. It's not, but I'm here. And it's not mine. I don't own it, it's not, but I'm here to help the city of Monroe City, and it's, 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 it's scary. Is it scary?
Yes, I, I agree with you.
So, as, as much as I want to do the, the, the project, if you ask me, can we afford it, I cannot tell you we can, and not be completely honest. So, there you have it.
Very fair.
Yeah.
And then the mayor, throw him stuff. Okay, uh.
Do we?
Anything else?
Does the mayor have a question?
Well, are we gonna try to schedule a meeting, or not schedule a meeting?
We gotta do something, to get an answer.
We gotta.
We gotta wait till the.
We can schedule a meeting, we, and we can have a discussion.
Yeah.
And, uh, uh, Penny, you were at the last meeting, correct?
Parks meeting.
Parks meeting, yes.
Didn't, didn't we kinda touch on the questionable finances?
Yes.
Thank you. It's, it's not, it's totally.
I mean, if you didn't have another meeting, but I mean, it comes down to, if you're willing to take the chance of spending the money, I think you need to commit either tonight, or if you wanna have a meeting, we can try to get it together, uh, but I'm not sure it's gonna change the same thing that you have. I don't care if, okay, let's say it's fifty thousand dollars, that, you know, would come out of your account, can you say at this point that you scale back what you have to do?
Yeah, can we, yeah, can we do part of it?
Hmm?
Can we do just part of it?
Yes, we, they said that we could scale down some of the equipment and everything, uh, but, boy, that's been a while. I don't know. So, if you have some questions like that, by all means, but I'm sure they will meet with you again, uh, meet with us again, whoever it's gonna be.
So, can I just suggest that we just have a meeting in good faith, get it out there so that they can tell us everything, and we just know, you know, we decide all the options before just Nick saying, I know we can't afford it, I'm just saying, I just, no, I think, no.
Well, I, I, I think.
It's only fair.
The scale down, I think, I think have the meeting, have the meeting, uh.
See what the most important, most focused thing would be?
So, whose responsibility, I guess I'm asking to schedule a meeting, who's gonna reach out? I, I don't mind doing it, I just, you want me to?
When is.
Go for it. I mean, I can do it, anyone, anyone that's working can schedule a meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't mind reaching out to people and just trying to coordinate a meeting.
Steve, uh, Steve Yates is chairperson. Uh, get with Steve, just let him know what's going on, ask him to consider,
I'll take it. Yeah, schedule a meeting.
Consider being prepared to talk about a scaled-down budget. Uh, we'll just be bluntly.
Yeah.
Uh, honest with them. I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, I agree, but we're just making informed decisions, so.
Anything else, Parks and Cemetery? Next item on the agenda is economic development. Do we have anything for economic development?
There's minutes in the. Minutes in your packet, under section nine.
We're gonna meet again, uh, on Monday.
We had a really good meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lots of great.
Monday before council, next council meeting, we're gonna meet again, at six to five.
Twenty-four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes.
I actually don't care.
No.
Everybody was for Monday before the next council meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it is our intent to continue for a while to meet the Monday before, Thursday, every two weeks, for a little while, 'cause I think it's maybe a little long.
Any questions on EcoVivo?
No.
No questions, we'll move on. Uh, Administrative Committee?
No, we're gonna talk about that closed session.
Excellent. Uh, nuisance report, public safety, uh, we touched on the nuisance, uh, issue.
Is that committee met yet?
I'm sorry, what?
They haven't met, okay.
No, they have not met.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to call a meeting, though.
We are.
We're gonna have to call a meeting. Give us a little bit of time to get some things together. Are we done with that? Uh, Department reports, please?
Uh, yes. Our new officer is getting ready to graduate from the academy this Friday morning. Uh, he will be here at City Hall to be sworn into the city as a new police officer on Friday afternoon.
Cool.
And his first day will be next Monday, the seventeenth. And he is looking forward to starting and becoming part of the department and the state.
Excellent. That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Fire Department?
They had a fire.
Okay, uh, in, in here, we have the, I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, they were at a fire at the trailer park.
Dumpster.
Was it those dumpster, trailer?
The dumpster fire.
Down by the street.
Okay, within that was the, uh, fireworks approval, so under tab ten, there was a little bit of confusion on this, and it appears that a board, the board, previously approved an amount that did not include the eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, uh, that's shown on page two of this invoice. So, I think the only way I know how to address this is to have the board approve this invoice.
For eight hundred and seventy-two?
No, for eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, 'cause what I'm told is everything above line two on page two was previously approved. Uh, the eight hundred and seventy-two below that was not approved, but the eight hundred and seventy-two is part of the total.
I believe Chief was waiting for the quotes on the eight-inch mortars or something.
Okay, there was something in here.
Okay, so what we need to do, approve the whole thing?
I, I guess so.
Would, would not solve the problem?
'Cause this doesn't add up to.
Well, the eight seventy-two is just the, the eight-inch mortar, not the. So, just the.
So, this is only part of the detail of the invoice?
Yeah, part of the.
I mean, all the rest of it's on page one. Everything on page one and.
I have it on page one.
Oh.
You do. You know?
I don't.
Well, Michael, let's make this easy.
I mean, we already approved, we, we approved all but eight seventy-two.
We've all been eight seventy-two. I make a motion to approve invoice twenty twenty-four dash oh fifteen to Aerial FX.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor to approve the invoice twenty twenty-four dash zero one five in the amount of.
Eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
To Aerial FX Incorporated. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve invoice twenty twenty-four dash zero one five in the amount of eight thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents to Aerial FX Incorporated. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
One time, when money was tough, was it during COVID or something? Uh, the, we took up, got donations to offset this expense, donations.
Really?
Yeah.
Are we able to take donations as a city?
Yeah. Give it to the government all they want.
Okay, with everyone, with everyone in the gallery, please get out your checkbook.
Just pass that.
Singing, make your check out to.
There's a lot of people in town that night, let's.
Well, I mean.
Everybody gave a dollar.
Because we, we're gonna cut it back or not do it, and then boom, places, businesses.
Yeah.
Fireworks.
Don't. Well, we can still take it and put it in.
We can still take donations.
And use it for next year or whatever, yeah.
Or use it toward this payment.
Yeah.
Or like, at the Fourth of July parade, one time, they had people collect money, you know, 'cause they do that handle, pass the bucket.
Really?
They used to.
Wow.
They do, when they did it.
Jason, would you dress up like Uncle Sam and walk around?
Uncle Sam was thin.
And tall.
What?
There you go.
Well, looks like we're gonna have fireworks after all. Okay, uh, Water Department?
I seen you look at your watch.
Uh, that has more to do with me than it does with you.
We have to fix that.
It's not working, is it? No, it's.
All right, I passed out earlier, uh, just three, three, uh, uh, three-page, it's, uh, just backstory, uh, this is for the wastewater treatment facility. Uh, these were supposed to be pushed through with a change order. Uh, previous, uh, uh, City Hall boys dropped the ball numerous, numerous times on this, as well as the dehumidifier. The mayor has now corrected the dehumidifier, so thank you again very much. But what this is, is we, we use a polymer when we press out the sludge. Um, and polymers just, they come pre-mixed, but as they sit there, they will settle. And the thick stuff goes to the bottom. Must be getting that thunderstorm that you're hearing about.
It's like right on.
But, uh, it goes to the bottom and it doesn't all stay in suspension, so one day, we're running and the polymer's effective to this point, the next day, it's different. At the end of the, at the end of the run, we end up throwing away the bottom, you know, two to four inches of polymer. Uh, just have to throw it away because it gets so thick, it won't go through the pump. So, I'm asking for a barrel mixer that's made to mix the viscosity of the polymer to keep it all up in suspension so that we can use the entire quantity that we are purchasing. Uh, there's, uh, uh, there are three different quotes. One was for two thousand five hundred and forty-six, one's for two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty-one cents, and then one for thirty-two ninety-five. Specifically, we do not have three-phase available or two-twenty electricity available at the location that's in, so I need to do one-ten, uh, uh, electricity. So, I, there, there's only certain specific mixers that I can use that would mix this viscosity, which is, uh, I can't remember the, the term now, but it's over five hundred, uh, is what the viscosity is.
So, the cheap one would do the job?
The cheap one will do the job. The cheap one does not have, uh, the shipping on it, so I, it will be, so if you do approve the twenty-five forty-six, it's gonna be twenty-five forty-six plus shipping.
How do you transfer the polymer into this container to mix it?
There is no container. Uh, we come straight out of the drum, so I, I will remove.
You can put it in the bunk hall.
Yes.
Gotcha. I'm clear with that.
Wow, look at you.
That's the little holes on the top, leave them alone.
That's what it says.
That's what it's called.
So, this is. This is just a pump that goes down into the barrel.
It's a mixer.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not the barrel.
So, you're fifty-five gallons?
Physical confusion with the entire board on what that actually.
We'll, we'll get it into detail off the record.
And then the other, the, the other bung was where we put the, uh, the suction side.
But that's what it's called?
That goes straight into the pump. So, one side's gonna now be missed, the other one, yeah, is, uh, it goes out, yeah.
And this is all being recorded. Far world.
So, these, these two orbits may be closer in numbers than the popcorn, because one, the one doesn't include the shipping.
Right, right.
And shipping on the one is two, almost two hundred, so.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, but I, I wouldn't, I, I would say that, uh, it's gonna be close to two hundred dollars worth of shipping on either one of them. So, they're, they're gonna be right there next to each other.
So.
And I can tell you, USA Blue Book, the city already has an account, and I deal with them
Which one's that?
Uh, on a, on a monthly basis.
Okay.
It's another company that, it's just off the internet. I can't tell you where they're even located at.
Okay.
Because I was looking for other numbers.
I'll make a motion to authorize purchase of the phone connection for two thousand five forty-six plus shipping and.
From USA Blue Book.
From USA Blue Book.
I'll find it.
Phone connector, she said.
Phone connection.
You can say mixer, it's on here, you can, you can say mixer.
Mixer.
What?
The mixer.
You can say mixer.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, uh, purchase the mixer for two thousand five hundred and forty-six.
Plus shipping.
I'm sorry.
Shipping.
Plus shipping. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Should we have a second?
More seconds.
We have a motion, a second, to purchase the, uh, connection for two thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars, plus shipping. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion, motion carries.
I have one more thing. Earlier, the mayor was, uh, talking about Black and Beach. Uh, they, they're the ones that did the design and gave us the whole write-up, uh, about our water plan, what we needed to do to, if we wanted to, uh, or, they gave us the options. Uh, Black and Beach is a, and as he also says, a very large engineering firm. Ben Fries is a great engineer. He just told me a little while ago, he said that if, if they take us on again, because they finished up the previous project, the project manager we had at that point is no longer here, and he said that, that, they're gonna start out probably thirty to forty thousand dollars to do what you're asking me to do, which he said, we can do it for next, we could do it for next to nothing. He said that he will clean up the plans, he will give them to me, and he said, you're, you can take it to Klinger, you can take it to PSBA, you could go to Four Points, we can go to another smaller firm, and he said, he will actually work with them on the backside to, to help us out. But I'm just saying that we are not gonna be able to hire Black and Beach. So, I don't know what the city's policy is on hiring engineers, uh, if there's a certain dollar amount.
We have to request qualification.
The RFQs.
Yeah.
But everything's already engineered. All we're really asking them to do is get a hold of DNR and do the permit.
I don't know how we pay with that process.
Yeah, how much is that gonna cost?
I can, I can get that information and have it at the next meeting. I wouldn't think it's gonna be over five thousand dollars.
So, he said they won't, they won't pick it up?
He said, no, he said, they, they gladly pick it up, but he said it's gonna be.
You can't afford it.
It, yeah, exactly. He said, he knows what our budget is, and he said, you can't afford it. He said, you can get Mark Ross to do it for a few thousand dollars. Uh, Kyle Pochek to do it for a few thousand dollars, probably, 'cause he's got everything done.
Well, who will help us write up the project scope? Because we're gonna have to tell, when you go out for a request for qualification, you have to tell them what it is they're working on.
Right. Is there a dollar amount that you have to be under where you would not have to go out for RFQs? And go through the.
I can't answer that question. I have no idea.
Okay.
I can, I can, I can find someone to ask, but.
Yeah, it should be in our ordinance, is how I would say.
Well, doesn't that put a procurement, a copy of our procurement policy in there? Does that, does that pertain also, I assume, to professional services?
Yeah, you just hit something really good. Um, we can go out to professional services. We gotta look at that, okay? I'm with you. We gotta, we gotta look at it real careful, make sure we're not stepping outside, but that, yeah, up to ten thousand dollars. So, yeah, we might be able to do something. We gotta research, we gotta research it.
Okay, yeah, I can contact, uh, the local engineers around here that I know that, and just ask, what, what's it gonna cost for you to, uh, look at these plans and go to DNR for us?
Uh, yeah, someone that I'm, uh, I, a professional engineer with whom I have a relationship told me Mark Ross was really good at this kinda stuff, so.
He is.
And I'm not saying we should do anything, but you're right, the type of people are out there.
We need to talk to Mark Ross.
Mm-hmm.
We, we need to talk to him, and just.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but to me, they, they, we're not asking them to draw anything up. Black and Beach has already drawn everything up.
All plans are already done.
All we need is them to present, to present what Ben Fries has done to DNR to get a, to, to get a construction permit.
Would they need to have their seal on it, though? I mean, they wouldn't want to.
I don't know if they, I, it sounds to me like Ben was okay with them using his set of.
They'll, they'll probably communicate that.
Yeah.
He would just have, he would just have to release them, they're already paid for.
This wastewater thing you needed.
Yeah, the.
Is that granted? Is that, that, the Dunn project is closed out?
Yes. Yeah, and it. Yeah, and it, it was a hundred percent closed out. I mean, the money, the addition, whatever money was left over has come to the city. But when USDA released it, they, they said, you're gonna put this much in this fund and this much in this fund. So.
We're still showing sixty-five thousand, aren't we? Are we still throwing sixty-five thousand in that fund?
The wastewater fund?
There's a.
Pretty sure it's right there on Black and White.
Yeah, sixty-two, five, fifty-nine.
That's a debt service or the, not the.
There, I haven't seen, of course, everything from USDA on that, but some of that money has to be put in a, uh.
Construction.
Replacement and extension account.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then I believe you might be able to utilize those funds to get equipment for.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
That would be helpful. Okay, good enough. Anything else?
Possibly.
Yeah, I ask.
Anything else, Alderman Simpson?
Oh, well, thank you.
Okay, uh, are you done, George?
I am.
Thank you for your report. Electric? Gas?
I have one question, oh, I took, I don't know, I can add this another time, but just from personal who I work with here. I see that, like, Shane's balding meter base broke, contacted him and he has replaced it. I, I think it broke because it was broken by the workers. So maybe I'll just have him come talk to someone or something, but.
Okay.
I just, I think he did replace it, but maybe it shouldn't have been at his cost. No, don't worry, Ben, I'm just.
I don't know.
We'll just.
Yeah, we do have to talk, he has to come up and talk to us, I don't know.
Okay.
That is one, is it, what kinda meter was it, Lori?
Oh, now you're getting away the.
It was the electric meter when, when, uh, they got there, the base actually, according to Kerry, I talked to Kerry.
Sparked it or something.
Yeah, he said that, he said that the plugs were actually broke in the meter head, and whenever they went to pull the meter, it, it.
Okay.
Yeah, he said it was, he said it, it was, it was in bad shape, and they, they wouldn't have put a meter back in that existing one to begin with.
Okay.
Yeah, Kerry mentioned that.
Oh, I remember this now. Now I remember this. It was, it was, uh, it was the homeowner's side issue.
Exactly, yeah, it's the meter base, which is the.
The base itself.
So it was just because there was age and corrosion caused to.
I mean, if, if Shane doesn't think that's accurate, he'd more than welcome to come up here and talk to us.
I'm just, in case he watches this tomorrow and knows I brought it up.
Well, you're more than welcome to bring it up. Uh, okay, on the gas, uh, the sand storage containment. Ooh, back there under tab ten is the three quotes for the blocks. And why I didn't keep my fingers on it, I don't know, but I didn't. Where, where, okay, here we go. So using the information provided.
I'll make a motion.
The motion, what do you, what do you got? You got?
I wanna make a motion to accept the bid provided by Mono City Ready Mix on the amount of eighteen fifteen.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the bid from Mono City Ready Mix for one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars for the concrete block for sand storage for the gas department. We have a second. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The bid will be awarded to Mono City Ready Mix for the concrete box. Airport?
Street.
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 Absolutely. Concrete on the street, I apologize. Uh, where are we at on that? Is that far to?
Is that two bids on the concrete? Last, Mono City Ready Mix. I suggest we go to Mono City Ready Mix. We probably won't use twenty yards of concrete a year. We have, until we got a project coming up on assuming they'll charge the facility then, like Mel Street, maybe. I think there's five dollars difference, but, uh, Hamels aren't gonna drive forty miles round trip for two yards of concrete.
Yeah.
I think.
Charging your, being a big.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we use Mono City.
We have a motion on the floor to use Mono City Ready Mix for our concrete feet needs for this year, uh, at a hundred and fifty-six dollars, a hundred and fifty-six dollars and cents per yard, all in favor? We have a motion with a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast. We have a second?
There's a second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor toward the bid to. Mono City Ready Mix, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Are we done with the dumpsters?
Yes.
They were empty twice?
I think they advertised it through a certain date.
We did.
Well, we said fourteen-four six.
Yeah.
They were set Friday afternoon, and by noon Saturday, they were running open.
I never had to put anything in there.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. We'll see what Dane says tomorrow.
Yeah, after some people found out they were running open, where they even put in our little dumpster.
Yeah, I saw that too, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
The other bid.
We dealt with it.
The other bid was for the hot mixed coal patch. We only received one bid, and that bid was from Emery Sapp and Sons Incorporated. We are required to award the bid. Consequently, I need a motion to award the bid for hot mix and coal patch to Emery Sapp and Sons. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
We have a motion from Alderman Snyder. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve awarding the bid for the hot mix and coal patch to Emery Sapp and Sons. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, bid be awarded to Emery Sapp and Sons. Next thing on the agenda is. Hey, thanks, Kevin.
No.
Uh, next thing on, uh, on the agenda is the, uh, contract for provision of services between the city of Mono City and the Mosswood Golf and Recreation Association. The bid is the same as it was last year relative to cost. The only, the last three years. The only difference is, is this will run, uh.
One year.
One year.
For one year.
And it's. Over first? It's August, yeah?
Oh, that should be June, the June.
Okay.
So it's a little confusing.
It's stating per fiscal year, but the contract will be out for renewal next June.
Next June.
Oh, I see it.
All right.
I got read it.
On, on this date, next year, on twenty twenty-four, I would assume.
It's a.
Well, that's, that's your original terms, it'll be June first, twenty twenty-four to June first, twenty twenty-five.
Got it, got it, got it.
I just happened to see that.
Yep.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Lori, thank you. Folks, we need a motion to approve this. We have a motion on the floor to tru, approve the contract for provision of services between the city of Mono City and Mosswood Golf and Recreation Association. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Motion carries. Contract is approved. Uh, pool, number one? Alex, anything on the pool you're aware of?
Uh, we just did an inspection with her, I think, number one, three, that was pretty good. One or two things, but easily, easily.
X-line. Okay, the next thing is going to be a presentation of, of, of bills and approval of payments. I used to call it, this bill's payable, sounded so much easier to say.
I have a question. Um, did we really pay two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars for a post-staff box?
Oh, oh, sorry, I don't.
Okay.
That seems a little high. Two hundred and forty-six.
Oh, okay, okay.
That ain't.
You got my attention, where are you at this?
Um, toward the bottom.
Oh, wow.
Extra zero in there.
It's ten years.
Yeah, there you go.
That's a, that's a gold-plated.
Forever.
They never see you in a, in a golden basket.
Where was that at, Rob?
It's kinda toward the bottom to that.
About ten from the bottom.
Postmaster.
Postmaster.
And the, um, RESA, what is it, RESA Power rate charge is seventeen thousand four hundred.
That was for delivery.
That would deliver that big old huge transformer all the way from California. I didn't like it either, but I don't know what to do about it. I'm hoping we're getting to the point where we're done. What's that?
That's the, the box for two forty-six instead of twenty-six hundred.
We didn't do that check that way, did we?
No, no.
Are you sure?
It was just factored on the report.
My apologies.
That's fine.
I have a question on A and S. Did we really spend twenty-six hundred dollars in shipping?
Yes, the bulk of it was the.
We did the gas, uh, the gas is required by Public Service Commission to send out notifications so many times a year. And they had to send like the little sniffer thing.
Right, and that made it the tidbit.
They had to care all that for us.
Okay, so it wasn't actual UPS?
Why?
Posted.
Posted and preparing.
Oh, explain it.
Oh, sure, sure.
Oh, she's got her home.
And on the rubies, see, it's multiple departments, but they do break that down. Correct apartment, right?
Yes.
Perhaps. Perhaps she.
I did have one more item that's been paid since the list was created. Uh, you all should have a copy of this and with your practice. This is our.
Insurance.
Insurance.
Over on local.
We could do that. Just to give you an idea, um, the, the base assessment was the hundred and forty-six thousand. The property adjustment, that, that means that we added property to our schedule. We're allowed to do that two times a year, and then they will, you know, reflect that on our invoice. The loss prevention of it, that is where we don't reach so well on our evaluation. That's where that extra money comes in that we have to pay each year.
That's the point.
That's the points.
Okay.
Last year, we scored a seventy-five, and that's, this is a result of that, the sixteen thousand.
We need to score better. Uh, there are actual, there are actual inspections that are required. There are dark apartment managers that have very specific requirements, or we're going to have to make sure that they've got all the tools, they need to do those with.
And then like the, you know, meeting right there, that's a, that's a pretty big chunk. I mean, they want you, you know, there to, uh, listen in on.
I have.
The payroll verification credit, that was just a difference. Every year, we will have a payroll allotted, submitted to them, and that was just the difference there that we got back. The loss experience credit, uh, after so many years, any losses that we have, it starts, we start getting money back on those losses. So that's what's, uh, we're starting to get some more, uh, instead of a, that, we're starting to get some credits back. The firefighter cancel pool, um, we don't participate in that, and at this point, I don't know where we wanna go with that due to the balance issue and kinda wait to see how that goes first.
Right, I, I think that would be what you're, whatever you all wanna do, of course.
We can look into that further.
So is this breakdown, is this what's gonna be allocated to the different departments? Is that what I'm looking at?
Um.
Or what's that?
No.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, yes it is, I apologize. Yes, that is exactly where everything was allocated to.
Is the most expensive electric or gas?
It is, electric. Thirty-five is electric, uh, forty is gas. The general ledger, number forty, and the general ledger, number thirty-five.
Okay. So eighty-six plus one sixty-eight.
Yeah, so if, when someone does make a motion to approve the bills, it needs to be with the, in addition to the Mirma annual invoice. Those are due in their office by two twenty-eight, and if not received by then, there's.
Do not, what's our payroll, Brian?
A month.
I think, I think.
That's a good question. Um, I, I would have to look into that. I'm just now got the basics under control pretty much for the payroll system. I would love to get back to using our software for the payroll. But I'm not, I haven't really been taught so much on the reporting side yet of payroll.
Are you gonna modify this total amount on the accounts payable summary?
Just.
Or not?
Just say with the addition of, the, the motion could be with the addition of the Mirma insurance payment.
Okay.
Cause we can't do math.
Well, I was referring to the two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollar error, uh, minus.
Oh, yeah, oh, that.
With that correction, too.
Okay, all right. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve bill payable, including the Mirma amount due. Can I do it that way?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we need a?
Oh, someone.
No.
No.
Number what?
You don't need.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
We have a motion to approve bills payable. Do we have a second?
No.
We have a motion and a second to approve bills payable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Who was the, who made the motion?
I think I did.
Uh, Alderman Simpson made the motion, and.
Jason.
Jason.
Alderman Osborne second motion.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, and we're not gonna spend a whole lot of time talking about this, I don't think. What it comes down to is each of you received, uh, at least an email several weeks ago, and then most worked it this week. Uh, it was, uh, the internal audit of our license office. What, uh, the city clerk and I have discussed in regards to our assessment of that audit, that many of the issues that were detailed relative to security, the security portion of it, and the supposed requirement to have everyone in that office a background check, fingerprinting, approval by the, some state entity, uh, seems to be a lot to, to deal with. But there are constantly people coming in and out of that office, all of our, many of our, uh, people from the gas department, uh, water, uh, sewer are in that area. And if you're in that area, the state says you have access. So now everybody's gonna have to go through that, uh, process. If we, you, if we review their assessment in the strictest sense, everybody's gonna have to go through the fingerprinting, the background check, just because they might be near that, that particular license office. What Danette and myself and Alex have done, we've taken upon ourselves to see if there's another location within the complex that could be utilized for that department. We've concluded that without spending a lot of money, uh, perhaps the addition of one door, we could, uh, move the license office downstairs into that area that's glass, got the glass front on it, uh, and it was originally designed for use by the fire department. Uh, that would remove the, uh, the issue of the security. It does not address the issue of specific, uh, issues relative to processes used and, and, uh, uh, it, issues that, that they brought up with those. Those are training issues, uh, that, that would have to be dealt with by a DOR personnel relative to training. Uh, as far as supervision of that, of that area, uh, I can't suggest that there would be any additional supervision, particularly if they moved downstairs. So, uh, inasmuch as I don't like to say this, um, if we leave upstairs, at some point in time, we're gonna be forced to deal with those issues that were brought forth in the audit. My interpretation of how difficult that is and what problems it creates for the rest of administration to function properly, I, I'm, my assessment may be completely incorrect. If we do move this down, downstairs, uh, and I say them, currently, we have a full-time associate and a part-time associate. They both actually work for the city of Mono City. The revenue derived from the license office, uh, supports the license office, but not much more relative to cost. Uh, there is no separate costing for utilities or, uh, there's also, there's also no accounting for when we utilize, uh, one of their personnel to manage. there's also, there's also no accounting for when we utilize, uh, one of their personnel, the man in front best to do utilities. Now, those issues are gonna be, um, resolved via another method, I think, very quickly. So, what it comes down to, really, at some point in time, we need to have a discussion. I'll try to hurry. Do we want to continue to have a license office? Yes or no?
Yes.
If we wanna continue to have a license office, do we wanna move it downstairs to address these issues from Department of Revenue?
I see, yes.
Yes or no? All you all have to do is say yes. You don't have to. I don't even know that it needs a motion. Uh, the city attorney has advised me that I have, I have a great deal of control over what occurs within the confines of this building and the administrative staff. I can't approve spending money or buying stuff, I gotta do that, but I have a lot of control over what we do within officers. If you all tell me you're okay with us moving them downstairs, I will go to work on making that happen. I'll report back to this board. If it's gonna cost money, how much, what it would look like, when it would occur, I'll get Julie, who is the area manager, I'll have the same discussion with her. And if, if she provides me any information that I think would have a significant impact on your decision to keep and maintain license office, we, you will be contacted individually, or if one of you says we need to have a meeting, we'll have a meeting. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
All right, thank you so very, very much for, for your vote of confidence. I appreciate it. Uh, the next thing is a resolution. Here's what this is about, and I want you guys to, I, I, I know you all wanna get this all done. We got a lot more to do, or not a lot more, but a little more to do tonight. We do not, as a matter of fact, inform homeowners that we're going to be doing something like access or easement by going through their property. We don't tell them. We, we just don't do it. Uh, and I think we should, and other people have said that we should, because it's very respectful to knock on the door. Or if you have, if you know you're gonna be working on something a week at a time, put a notice on there and say, hey, gas department's gonna be over here, and we're gonna be working on the easement. Just want you to know, we're gonna be here, so if you see us here, don't be, don't be concerned. If you have any questions, give us a call, uh, before this date, and we'll be sure to answer them for you. Or if it's an emergency, I get it, uh, maybe you don't have time, but maybe you still do have time to go knock, at least knock on the door and at least attempt to notify. So, if they come back and fall, and they say, well, you never told us, we say, well, it was an emergency, we knocked on the door, nobody told us, we're sorry. Maybe we should leave a note on the door. I think it does about respect. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, we will prepare a document to send to each of the department heads, and we'll figure out what kinda the note, notice is gonna look like. We'll prepare the notice for it. We'll print it out, and we'll give it to them. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Danette, did I answer it, you think?
Oh, my God.
All right. Okay.
Isn't that strange? How hard it is outside? That's creepy.
I know, I know, I know what that, what did the old sailor say? Anyway, I don't know any old sailors.
See, still we, like, there was that door card, it was just a little bit behind it.
Well, if there be no more discussion, um, I would like to, um, adjourn this meeting, go into closed session. Uh, the tentative gen, agenda of this meeting also includes, uh, a vote to close part of this meeting pursuant to R S M O six one zero point zero two one, uh, three, which is hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
We have a motion to go in closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We need a voice. How, what do you call it?
Roll call.
Roll call. Uh, Lori?
Yeah.
Adrian? Jason, yes?
Yeah.
Bobbin, Mike?
Yes.
All yeses. So, do we want to retire to the other office, or? If everybody's leaving, we'll do it, if everybody's leaving, we'll do it right here.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Yeah.
That is the strangest look out there, is it not?
It really is.
It was so dark all ago, and now it's.
It isn't good. How much longer do we have for this storm?
I just looked at my.
Do we already get ghosts?